This is a test of the City of Palac audio system. This is a test of the...
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City of Palaca special call, City Commission meeting December eighteenth, twenty twenty four, five P M. I'm calling this meeting to order. Ms. Grant, oh, Madam City Clerk, could you please read the special call meeting notice?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
To Commissioners Tammy McCaskill, Justin Campbell Senior, Will Jones, and Rufus Boreum. You're hereby notified a special called meeting of the Palaca City Commissions called to be held on December eighteenth, twenty twenty four, at five o'clock P M. At City Hall, two oh one North Second Street, Palaca, Florida, three two one seven seven. The purpose of the meeting is to cover some of the agenda items from the canceled December twelfth, twenty twenty four meeting. Please govern yourselves accordingly. Sign Roberta and Coria, Mayor.
Thank you. We are going to stand for the invocation room chaplain Malberry and a pledge of allegiance from Commissioner Jones.
Good evening, everyone. Father, we give you thanks and praise for your goodness tonight. We thank you, dear God, for all your many blessings. Thank you for how you blessed us all day long. You stayed the hand. Death, you reduced diseases, and you kept us flawed by your stripes, and we thank you healed. We pray thy blessing upon this service, God, that come with this special session meeting. We ask God for your directions, your guidance, your wisdom, and all that we undergo to do for your glory. Father, we pray for the furtherance of this city being moved forward in the way that you would have it to go. We look to you and trust you now. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Good Jonathan.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Madam Senate Clerk.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Thank you.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Boreum. Absent for the record, Mayor Robbie Coria.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. We're going to go on to the minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to read minutes from November fourteenth, twenty twenty four?
Motion to approve.
Second. The motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Public recognition presentations, employee of the month, Ms. Jones.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner. As we end twenty twenty four, recognizing an employee each month for performance and outstanding performance, as well as just doing exceedingly above their job description, for the month of December, the City of Palaca would like to recognize Ms. Jackie Papas.
Hi, everybody. I'm Daphne Bruezo. I work one-on-one with Jackie, and I just want to let everybody know, if you don't know her, she is amazing. When the entire Grants team left, she literally held that department together, and we cannot say thank you enough for everything she's done for us, all the teachings she's done. So that's why I nominated her.
And Daphne is one of our new employees, our grant writer, grant administrator, and you're doing great. Thank you.
Thank you. On to City Manager and Administrative Reports, update airport land swap, Ms. Cardy.
Yes, with the airport land swap, we are making significant progress. We have figured out. Well, first of all, we did have a meeting at the airport advisory board level, and the direction that we had been given by the commissioners was to take it back for their input. Their input is that they approve it primarily because once we had a better understanding of the swapping of the land, the size of the land, we realized that it is in the city's best interest to proceed as the advisory board itself did recommend. Additionally, the internal transactions that had to be completed between the city and the airport, we have done that as well, because the city did, in fact, purchase land that was owned by the airport, so that has also been completed.
Thank you. And the airport, it also benefits the airport, not just the city.
Yes, it benefits both. It does. Sorry.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Cardy? Update on the former employee investigations.
With that, we have two employees that are under the investigation, one of which the attorney that was conducting the investigation has issued a final report, and basically said he's completed. He also did transfer the report to two state agencies so that the agencies themselves can consider whether or not to take it to another level. The other investigation is substantially starting now. There was a transition, and during that transition, the attorney did not actually start. So at this point, the attorney is starting, and we expect to get some a visit from the attorney to meet with the various employees.
What question do you have?
I'm done.
You're done on that one?
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, for the record, Commissioner Rufus Boreum has joined via telecommunication. That was the noise you just heard.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
As it relates to one of those investigations of the former employer, employee, are all of the complainants still employed with us as well? I know the person that was complained upon is no longer here, neither one of them, in both cases. So, but are there still victims, I guess, or complaints? I'm not going to say victims.
Allegations, the people that.
Allez complaint forward. Are they still here?
Okay, I'm going to ask Human Resources to come up since she's been charged with the responsibility after Commissioner McCaskill did transfer that to her.
Some of the complainants, because there was some names listed, are still here. However, all of them are not signed by it with names, so I cannot say whether they are here or who they actually belong to. So all of those documents was given to the attorney for her review, and she has not yet come back to say if she's going to be able to put names behind all of those, the complaints.
Well, the purpose of me asking, not that they don't have the liberties of doing so, but the cost that's associated with the investigation, and they may not be able to reach the individuals. This was a question I wanted to ask it publicly so that we know where we're going with this.
If I would just say, since the leaving of Mr. Bale and the employees that have been termed, I would say, not knowing all of the names, that the majority of them are still here. That's what I would say.
Mayor.
Yes.
If I can, just to Commissioner Jones's point, I know that at one point we had the conversation as to if we were looking to go forward, and we made the decision to move forward so that in the event the names would be able to be cleared, and that was in both investigations. So I wanted to make sure that that was put out there, that this is something that we decided to move on as a commission so that the investigations would be able to be complete, and whatever the outcome would be, the outcome would be.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Thank you, Ms. Jones. At this point, I'm going to open the floor up to public comment. Sam Deputy. Please give your city or town of residence in three minutes.
Palaca, Florida. I want to just say thank you for the Christmas parade. We had an agonizing time. The weather report got worse and worse and worse, and it was supposed to pour rain by seven, but the good Lord saw fit to see us through again, and it has never poured on our parade in twenty-one years, and I had confidence that the good Lord was with us, and he was. But I want to thank the mayor and Mrs. Cardy for their financial support in that parade, because that helps out a lot, and the leadership is wonderful. Want to thank Chief Shaw and especially Officer or Sergeant Toby. Sergeant Toby is, Williams, thank you, is a true community servant, and he came sailing through again this year, and we're just pleased to be able to work with him. Jessica with Mr. Eddie's and the Event Department, and Mr. Joe with Public Works to do help with the cleanup, et cetera, and we're making some changes on the cleanup issues so that we can be easier on our city staff. But I want to say thank you for everything, and great turnout in spite of the rain, and just thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy, and thank you for organizing the parade for the last twenty-something years.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I say, I'm not sure if Mr. Deputy was going to leave, but when it comes down to the comment section, I would have, I want to address something to him as we move forth.
Okay, let's please do that. Right, wait. To Varan's clock.
To Varan's clock, Palaca, Florida. I've been coming down here for a year and a half. I only wanted one question asked for a whole year and a half. There's a problem where y'all said I'm making allegations against the city. Right here, Mayor, I have a fire inspection for ten nineteen twenty-three. Business lane C T L L L C, that's my business. But y'all supposed to transfer the ownership on June twenty-sixth, but y'all say I was out that business. So if I'm lying, is the fire chief lying, or is you lying? I've been going through this problem. Y'all transferred the ownership of my business. Y'all know y'all transferred the ownership of my business. Y'all committed fraud. Y'all know y'all committed fraud. To all the city commissioners, Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner McCaskill, can you ask the city, since I'm making allegations against the city, can you ask the city, how was I arrested for a business that's not registered with the state of Florida? Only person know about this business is the City of Palaca Police Department. It ain't registered with the state of Florida. It's still under my name. So y'all committed fraud and corruption. My business is gone, and y'all transferred the ownership, the paperwork right here. Ms. Cardy know this business is not registered with the state of Florida. That's a charge right there by itself altogether, and that's allegations to fraud to show fraud had been committed by the City of Palaca. I'm not no criminal. I'm the victim of the city committing fraud. So what do I have to do? I come up here, I'm disrespected. I ain't allowed to talk. Somebody always over talking me. Where am I right set? Every time I'm up here, I can't get no question. But every time Miss West, every time anything come up about Mr. Griffin, you pull it up left and right. You pull it up quick, and you'll give the city your legal representation. But when you, it's me, you give legal opinion. So is I'm a criminal, or am I a victim? I got all the paperwork showing that Mayor y'all wrong. Y'all gave my businesses away. Your paperwork ain't adding up. Y'all say I was out of there twelve thirty-first. I got two fire inspections. One for two twenty-two, that's sixty days after y'all say I was out of there. June twenty-sixth, y'all transferred the ownership of my business. Ten nineteen, the business still in my name. So, okay, well, I'd like to, can I get the question asked? How can y'all, how can I get arrested for my business? It's still my business. Can you answer me, how can I get arrested for a business not registered with the state of Florida, where y'all say it was transferred?
Your time is up, excuse me.
I'm gonna put this for your record.
Thank you. Is anybody else here for public comment at this time?
I just want to say.
Could you please give us your name and city of residence?
Yes, my name is Tarsha Gibbons. I live here in Palaca. I've been coming since March twenty-third of twenty twenty-three. Just want to share some good news concerning center, historic center Academy's property. I don't know if you're aware, but we have a tenant, which is Epicure. They'll be making an announcement soon. They're currently working on the bus garage building. I stood before you last year, and with the hopes of the city backing us and supporting us in our endeavor to actually restore that property, which is historic, it's on the national register, it's been there since nineteen ninety-eight on the national register. We're also, for those who don't know, Historic Center Academy is the first accredited black high school in the state of Florida. It's also the first accredited public school in the state of Florida, so it's a big deal, and it's right here in Palaca. So I just want to give you guys that information and let you know we are making progress. What seemed to be impossible is possible. I'm living proof of that. I also want to add to what Mr. Clark said. Just want to give you hope and encouragement with your case, Mr. Clark. What seems impossible, it is impossible. Last year, when we started out, or when I started out, it was a walk of faith. I had no idea how we were going to do, what we were set out to do. But I trust the God that I serve, which is the God that's the true and living God. I serve Him. I believe Him, and I know that whatever is hidden in the darkness, it will always come to light. So if there's anything that's going on concerning your case, we know without a shadow of a doubt. Look at my story. Look at Historic Center Academy. Look at what God has allowed to happen. So I'm back like I never left. I'm here. I'm not going anywhere. I'll continue to come forward. I'll continue to support Mr. Clark and any other citizens that have concerns, and they just want to be heard. If I didn't come last year, I don't know where we would be in this progress of restoring Historic Center Academy, but I also want to thank our former mayor, Mr. Terrell Hill. It was him who actually brought us the client for our property. So I just want to encourage those that may feel a little overlooked or may not feel like you're being heard. Don't give up. Keep fighting. Keep your hands clean. Do right by God, and he will open up the door and bless you in a mighty way. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell, you want to make a comment in regards to Mr. Deputy?
Yes, Mr. Deputy. I wanted to, I'm not sure if this was brought to your attention, but I want to know the process of the tenants that stay along the parade route. Along the parade route, once we got to a certain point, you had a citizen that turned out in front of Commissioner McCaskill and I in their personal vehicle, which almost caused some major issues along the parade route. So I want to know how our, if citizens along that route are notified or to say, hey, move your cars to a certain area, but I did want to bring that to your attention, that a citizen pulled out in front of us along the parade route.
And thank you. We have those things. One year in the Azalea Festival, we had a lady that turned her car on the sidewalk and drove down the three hundred block on the north side sidewalk until we stopped her. You know, we have all kinds of things. Yes, everyone is notified, and we go through the neighborhood, you know, to make sure on the Oak Street side, to make sure, and I hand out notices a month in advance and then the week of to remind people not to park on St. John's Avenue. And then we usually have, and I'm sure we did this year, that the police department puts someone at every corner to ensure that people don't break into, because the twerking group that we had from Jacksonville, you know, for two years broke in the parade from a side block and did their twerking. And so we're really trying to make sure that that does not take place, but there's.
I just want to, twerking and a vehicle.
Are two different things.
Two different things. I want to bring, like, I just want to make sure as we move forward that that was a safety concern.
Safety.
We had a vehicle in the parade, and then Commissioner McCaskill and I, we were walking, and so we were. And so we were waving and doing all of that thing. And next thing you know, we had someone literally turn directly in front of us as we are paying attention to the citizen. So I want to focus on that and not so much.
I will check with Sergeant Williams to make sure how that worked. But we should have an officer at each corner to make sure that does not take place. Because my concern is people, as soon as the parade gets started, people cross the street and, and, you know, they're sitting across the closed streets to view the parade. So I want to make sure because safety is my biggest concern at the lineup time and during the parade times. So I will check into that and make sure with Officer Toby that we had someone at every corner. Okay, I haven't gotten the bill yet, which would tell me how many officers we had and, and the hours they were there. But thank you for raising that because we need to know those in advance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also, to Mr. Clark's point, I know it seems as if this is something that has been before us quite some time. And again, I don't want him to feel as if we are not, he knows I'm one of the ones who actually asked to give him the presentation that he desires. But it appears every time he comes before us, there is some additional information that is brought to us that was not brought to us before. My question would be with the records or documentation that he has brought before us tonight with regards to the inspection. How does that tie in to this entire situation? Was that information that was provided before that? I just want to know how that is and what can we do if there is anything that we can do to move forth with this? Again, I was not aware of the fire inspection. I don't even know if that plays a part in the entire thing. But again, I do believe that that's something that should be addressed because he has asked a question. And that's what we're here for, is to answer questions, even though if it's uncomfortable or hard. So I want to make sure that we operate in complete transparency and trust as we move forward and with this matter.
I would like to respond, Commissioner, if I may. What we will do with this additional information about fire inspection. I did meet with, at least twice, I think, with Mr. Clark and tried to go over as much as I could, understand chronology, events, everything that I could. So the fire inspection, I don't think I knew that at the time I met with him. That is, that is relevant because if we did a fire inspection and it's under his name, you know, I would like to see that as well. I think he also brought additional information just now showing that the business is under his name. So what we would like to do is review this information again. So if there's anything that we did not consider, that he has now brought to us again. And also I'll get with legal, you know.
And Chief Taylor is here, so.
I would like legal also to look at it.
This out in public, because again, our main concern is making sure. And I do know time is of the essence because he is moving forth with a trial that could potentially lead to some time. So I want to make sure that this becomes a priority because he has been very much before consistent in the eyes of the commission. He has asked several questions. And again, every time we have returned it back to staff, staff has brought us something. But again, this information was not provided to us before. And I just want to know if the information that he brought to us tonight, would that have a say or would that have a way? A weight in everything that has transpired. So again, I want to make sure that this becomes a priority because I do know time is of the essence because there is a trial or some potential stuff through the state attorney's office, so.
So I would like to offer Mr. Clark to please come back again on Friday and let, let me go through it again.
Yeah, well, you, you want to set that meeting up on Mr. Clark for Friday?
Yes.
She just wants to set up a meeting with you for Friday, if that's possible. No, please, no, no, not at this time. We need to get more information gathered and that's what your intent is, a meeting Friday. So we have more information, so we can.
I'll actually have Fire Marshal there as well.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Commissioner Barham's hands raised.
Commissioner Barham?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, for acknowledgement. But again, I, I also supported Mr. Clark with his ability to be able to have a meeting. And if we have spoke with him in length. And so, but I think we probably need to get guidance from the, our, our city attorney to be able to kind of, because we're laboring a lot on something that we don't have all the facts. We get new facts as, you know, day by day. So I believe it would be best if we heard from our city attorney, get some direction.
Sure, I have provided guidance on multiple occasions regarding this incident. The fire inspection report is new information, but to address Commissioner Campbell's question, it would have no bearing on the criminal allegations that have been brought against Mr. Clark. If they have any bearing at all, he can provide them to his defense counsel in the criminal proceeding. But that was grand theft and it has nothing to do with the fire inspection. That being said, we'll be happy to meet with him again, but we've been meeting with him on a regular basis over the entire course of my employment over the last year and a half.
And that's fine, and I believe that's what we're here to do when we have citizens who have concerns, when we have citizens, especially when we know that there were some things done on our end that were not done properly. So again, I want to make sure as we proceed forth that all options, all Ts, of course, and all Is have been dotted with what we can do on the city's end to make sure that when Mr. Clark or whatever transpired, that we know that we have done absolutely everything that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any additional comments or responses to public comment?
Yeah, well, I, I just had, just, just want to follow back up on the, I guess, the comment that our city attorney made. Is that, should we even be meeting again in terms of that? I mean, because you just said it, it doesn't have any bearing. So we want to meet again as it relates to that. I mean, that's, that's just a question.
That's my request.
Absolutely, we're happy to meet with citizens about concerns that they have at any time.
Okay, I mean, I just, I understand that your request, my, my concern was the fact that, you know, the city attorney made a statement about it had no bearing. So my question was to the city attorney as to, would that be, would be proper? Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? We're going on to the consent agenda. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Prematurely interrupt it, but, and ask a question about the, the investigations. So we answered one, gave us answer one, but this happened before. We didn't get the answer about second.
Could you reiterate it, please?
Let's go back to the, to her reports.
Okay, so the first investigation has been completed. That was with the assistant city manager, that has already been completed. The second one was with the city manager. We, that is almost actually starting because the attorney said that she did not receive any information. So we confirmed, we sent it again last week. And now she is starting the investigation. So in summary, one investigation is complete. To the extent that we can have completed and it has been referred to two other state agencies. The state agencies will then make a decision or determine as to whether or not they should do anything.
Can you move? So, so my follow-up question to that is, I think we all received those documents, the final report. That report have indicated some actions, activities that legal need to actually guide us upon how we need to go forth. So it's not just you could just give us that report and we just like, okay. Now, it is going to a state agency or another agency. But going forward, there's some dealings that we have that's coming before us. And they have conflict all through it. So we're not going to sit back and act as if we haven't seen what we saw. So we were about going through this agenda without addressing it on our end. And I don't know if we're going to go public with it, but I don't feel comfortable consenting some of these things that are here that I feel conflict, I say going forward. And I would like for you guys, I don't know if it was known before or after the agenda is made up, were made up. But I, I sure hope that these things are covered prior to we're seeing it. No pre-agenda meeting, I had no information about it prior to the agenda being made. I don't know if any other commissioner there as well. But legally, I want to know. Are we okay to go forward, move forward with some of these requests as only agenda? Now and going forward? Because some of the things, I think we instructed, we said that you were going to push off some things on the agenda and have on table until we know the facts. According to Ms. Carter, what we received was the facts.
Was the final report, yes.
Final, final report. A fact finding, but that's the same fact finding that we received. For me.
Yeah, I think.
In the initial report. So, and the attorney was on the audio and said, there was some more and we gave additional time, but we didn't receive anymore. That's why I asked you for, before you completely, sorry. That's why I asked you for the complete report, the final, with everything. So we won't have to revisit and won't come up later.
May I respond?
Please do.
Okay, so in September, the investigator gave us this first initial report. And in that report, he indicated that he would like to do more investigation. And he would go as far as he could to finalize it. December, no, November twenty-eighth, somewhere in that area, he did actually send to us the final report.
November twenty-seventh.
That, somewhere in November, yes. And I, I did send it out, but today I said, let me send it one more time because there are some items that I know want to be on the agenda that the commissioners has a whole work to turn about. So that is the final report that we know that's him closing it out. He's done. And he's made all of his findings and disclosures. And he also made, he actually gave an opinion as well. He did do that too. Now, he did not give us any additional steps or guidance. And therefore, yesterday, we, legal and I had a meeting and I did ask her, our legal, our city attorney, to issue to me so that I can send it to the commissioners as some, a summation, a synopsis, and what is her recommendation for us to move forward? So I just asked her to pursue that yesterday. If you would like to respond, if you may.
Yes, and I have complied with your request yesterday. In terms of the report by Attorney Rossman, there were three main items that he investigated. The first was the Kelly Smith Road. The second was the River Center Land Swap. The third was the Airport Land Swap. In terms of matters on this agenda, I'm not aware of anything that would touch on any of those subjects. But if I'm wrong, please let me know. In terms of moving forward, we are under contract for the Airport Land Swap. As you recall, because you read the report, he was unable to find that there was any basis for any kind of wrongdoing on behalf of Jonathan Griffith when it came to the Airport Land Swap transaction. So I think the city should feel some level of assurance now that this has been fully investigated to proceed with that particular transaction. That is a future transaction. The River Center Land Swap has already occurred. The Kelly Smith Road issue, the rezoning issue, has been tabled by this commission until, pending the investigation report. In addition, the interim city manager and I have requested, we met with counsel for the property owners last week. And we requested a very specific chronology from his client's perspective of exactly what happened and the interactions that his client, the property owners, had with every sort of interaction that they had with Public Works, any sort of utilities, the city manager, the planning department, including with Lisa Walsh and the current planning director, Lorenzo Agamo. That chronology has been submitted by counsel for the property owners and should be considered and taken under advisement by this commission when they move forward with that rezoning matter, which I do not believe is on this agenda.
And additionally.
Wait, so when?
Okay.
When was that information that you just spoke about received?
We just got it. That's, that's what I was just ready to tell you, that we just, I, I actually just received it yesterday. So I have not actually read through it, internalize it so I can send it to you. But my intention is that you will receive it Friday when I send that heads-up report. So I just got it.
What are the two agencies? Do we know that the attorney that did the investigation, what two agencies did he send the report to?
I'm assuming. Sure, the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, F D L E, and the State Attorney's Office.
So will any contact be made with them to?
It is solely within the discretion of those agencies on whether or not they feel that there is a basis for further investigation and bringing charges.
The question was, will we make contact with them or would they make contact with us?
I, I wouldn't even know who to contact at this point. But I, I can look into that further. I, I don't have any guidance from the attorney that made this report.
So maybe reaching out to Mr. Ross again.
Yes.
Getting that information.
Right, because we really had not even taken care of some file obligations with that particular attorney. So I would like to at least get him paid and I will be doing that hopefully this week. And we'll be contacting him in reference to, is there anyone that we can contact at both of the agencies? Just to get a feel.
I think it's our responsibility, first of all. Secondly, there is also, for me, that was another piece to that. Those were two law enforcement agencies. The other one was, one of the findings was something else. I mean, wasn't it a different finding that maybe not? It was another find, I believe, you mentioned two. Three, and the third was ethics, right? When, isn't it, the other one is ethics, so it's a commission on ethics that would look into.
I raised that as an option for this commission to pursue in the beginning and that option was declined. That is what I had recommended, that this matter be brought to Commission on Ethics. That is the regular course for conflicts of interest and it's also free through the state of Florida. But that is not the option that this commission chose. They chose to follow the advice of then-city manager Troy Bell to hire an independent investigator, Greg Rossman, to conduct the investigation rather than send it to the Commission on Ethics.
I don't think it's rather than, in addition to, I, I don't recall, I, we're here now, I think he could do a poll. We could ask this commission, but I requested that it go to the Commission on Ethics, that I thought it was more ethical. We didn't know about anything deeper. So how would we leapfrog into a, a law enforcement? Ethics was, that's the number one path that we were going with this, from what we learned here in this commission.
So is that something we can take action on now?
So the complainant needs to file their complaint with the Commission on Ethics and that's what launches the process.
So as the attorney for the city of Palaka.
Thank you.
We're requesting that this happens. So is that, just tell me, because I don't know what legal actually do, other than give us guidance. Do you also take any action? If not, that means city manager would be. And so I guess city manager answered to this board. That request, I think. That request, I think, and I think Commissioner Borm is ready to talk on, we requested that that happen.
Okay.
So we're requesting now, I am now, happen. Uh, Ms. Gillis actually asked in the middle of meetings to, to, just for fresh memories.
Okay, so now that we have gotten finally more information, we do now have the final report. All of this has happened within the past, say, two, three weeks. We do have additional information that we got from the meetings and so forth. We will follow the recommendation made by the commissioners and that we file the appropriate paperwork. With the commission of ethics, we can do that, right?
Can we do that?
At least we'll find out. If not, you, I guess I would, but I'm sure.
Sure, I can discuss this offline with you, there, there are risks, um, for bringing allegations that, uh, do not result. In terms of attorney's fees awards, they recently enacted a provision, the commission on ethics for prevailing party attorney's fees. So unlike an independent investigator, and this may be why Mr. Bell opted for the independent investigation, because it avoided that risk. Um, it, there is risk involved in pursuing it without knowing the allegations of the anonymous complaintant.
So the question is, what could you discuss in person? Because again, ultimately, the decision would be made in the open with regards to all of us being able to weigh in. And again, if this is something that we've asked and required before, I don't understand what meeting would happen offline. That could not, information that you could not provide us in the open. That would allow us to make the decision that we've already made prior to.
And it is exactly what I just told you, that is what I would inform my supervisor of, that there is risk involved in, forward with that complaint.
Don't want to be aware of that, and you still feel that's a course of action.
Right.
What are we gonna do?
So course of action is that we're gonna follow the recommendation of the board of commissioners. It's real simple, I mean, we work for you. So you have made a request and we will follow it and I will take note. To whatever legal advises, whatever she let me understand. As a functioning as South City Attorney, I will take note of it. At the same time, I will proceed with what has been requested. And if there's something that we need to communicate to you, we will do so.
Commissioner Borm, uh, would you like to say something, speak?
Uh, I'm walking in the door right now, just give me a second.
Uh, while, while Commissioner Borm is coming in, I would like to say, we always refer to what this commission says, but when this commission says. What direction we desire, there's always, there's always, uh, hesitancy or reluctant. Uh, behavior as we desire, um, our needs, and this is not just with this specific case. So again, if we're not giving clear direction, if we want additional information or additional direction. Please ask us at this time, because again, we're revisiting a subject that we've talked about numerous of times, requesting the same information. And then again, if this was something that you knew at the beginning, that information should have been brought to us at the beginning. But now that we're asking the same question again, probably for the fifth time, we're now getting this response. And again, the information that we received outside of the formal, uh. Investigation report was information that I provided in my initial giving it from when I received it from a concerned citizen. So again, I want to make sure that as we provide direction, if the direction is not good enough for you or you need. To have it a little bit more vetted, please do so at that time, so that we're not continuously kicking cans. Down the road and we can get some of these matters addressed the way that we really need to get them addressed, so that we can continue to move on. With other matters that the city is being faced with.
Any further discussion on this item?
No, I'm, I know that they was talking about the, um. Commission, uh, not having that one option, or they, well, had the option and chose not to, uh. I, I don't think that option was, because we said run them all parallel. We said run all the, the deals parallel. There was commission on ethics as well as the other avenues we went with the, um.
Ethics.
Not, well, that's the commission on ethics, then. The independent, the independent attorney. And then what other, what other agencies, we said run them parallel.
Okay.
Um, so I just wanna know what, based on what we got. Final, it, it says final, but I don't think it's final, because the attorney stated that he had everything he touched, he, it kinda. It touched something else and, and so he didn't have enough time based on. The, um, the time that he was given, because I think when you, when, when Mr. Bell departed and you took over. I think you heard, you thought you heard that the commission said that we wanted to close it out. That's not what we communicated. So they would have had more time to be able to do a full and thorough investigation, and he said that. He didn't wanna waste taxpayer dollars, because it cost it. Three hundred and something dollars per hour for him to continue, and he said that everything he touched is propagated to something else, so. Uh, so again, so there's a lot more he probably could have.
Well, what happened is after you all clarified, uh, to me that you wanted him to go further. You know, I did communicate with him and he did restart. And he worked like another two months or so, uh, from September until, you know, a good two months. So he feels now that he did do the additional time that he needed. To completely finish a report, that, that's, that's really what happened, so that's why. November, at the end of November, he issued an additional report. And that was after he did more work, so in his mind, he's done.
I understand that, but the request was that he finished what was in the initial request. And, and there was four things in the initial request. And so he had finished only like a couple of them, he had. He had, he had to finish up the airport, and he, he also came up, and I think there was another one to do with the furniture.
Right.
Yes, so those were the things he needed to finish up, because they weren't finished. And he had not reported on that until the final report.
Okay, so, I, I like to say is that I did, um, communicate to him very well. Uh, because also, uh, a commissioner had contacted him, so. When I contacted him, he said, I just spoke to someone on that Saturday, and I said, well. They want you to work more to the end. And so what he did send to me, he believes is the end, I will contact him again. Uh, he said he's finished and.
He's finished what was in the contract. He, he stated, he stated that everything he, he could find more, I mean, he. Based on what I understood, he said that whatever he touched, he found, we would find a new thing.
Say that.
Okay, so, but outside of that, we, we have what we think to, that we believe is the final report from the independent study. So, but with all of that, I'd like to get some guidance from. I see the attorney, as it relates to all of the various things that we have in there, what should we do?
Exactly, and that's why Ms., at this point, Ms. West has just been assigned yesterday. The assignment of giving us some recommendation, I have also actually written to him yesterday too. To say, what are we to do? What other things do we have to do, but, um, he, he feels he's done, I'll call him.
I think generally, when we hire someone for a service, the proper thing to do is to come before us and present. What the matter is, just in case, again, because I don't want staff to feel as if we are. Bombarding or going after them for things that we should directly be able to ask the attorney. So I would ask that you ask the attorney, will he avail himself for a city commission meeting? So that we will be able to guide or direct these questions to him directly. And not have to deal with speculation or putting staff in a position. To deliver something that we can deliver him to direct, directly, and him being able to respond. Um, with his expertise in the matter that we asked him to do, so that will be my request. In order to move forward, so that we could get all of our questions answered by him directly.
I will follow that, thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, on to consent agenda, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda, consent agenda? Anyone?
Um, item, I think I have, I have item H if it's still there, yes. Uh, and I sent it.
I can speak to that.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Unless the city manager would like to. Um, the item he's referring to is not on this agenda.
Right, we pulled it.
Item H?
The one that, yes, we did. It's a different agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's pulled now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, why just? Alright, so I'm just trying to catch up, uh, everybody, I was in something.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as printed.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion is second, all in favor? Aye, any opposition? Thank you. On to regular business, do we want to take a recess, I wanna keep going, okay. Um, discussion direction, American Rescue Plan Act, Opera Funds.
Uh, yes, consistent with the, uh, federal state guidance, uh. The city of Palaka must encumber any opera funds that have not yet been actually spent. And so, um, this is our final amount, we haven't covered. A hundred eleven thousand, I don't know if you can make it even larger, would be great. So we've already encumbered a hundred eleven thousand. Uh, we have the remaining one point four million that we will encumber before December thirty one. And, um, and in our encumbering, we, we do need to have like names of the vendors. That you would like, uh, the funds to be encumbered for. So, um, what we have so far is for the other public health services. Uh, we encumber Med, Medex, which is used for COVID testing and so forth. Uh, for the housing or homeless, uh, we have a total of fifty thousand, so. We have Putnam County Caring Coalition, Bread of Life, Heart of Putnam Christian Service Center, New Creation. And that equal, uh, fifty thousand. For the housing assistance, we have four hundred ninety thousand one fifteen, that is at St. John's with Bill Lazar. Uh, for emotional, mental health, we have SMA Healthcare Mental. And this is, you know, this is just for your input, this is not final, but at least it allows us to encumber. So if you have like another mental health institution that you'd like us to do, please communicate. Before December thirty one, because that would be our deadline to encumber. For education assistance, St. John River College and POW. For the, um, the DW Transmission Palm to Mosley, a hundred seventy thousand. Uh, the GIS Palaka Heights. Okay, we've completed that, lead and copper, we're almost done with that, we should be done within, within this month. So that's a hundred sixty seven thousand left. Uh, provision of government services, that's the sports complex. Vacant property purchases abatement, we don't actually have vendors, but we know that we're doing it through the Division of Code Enforcement. And road maintenance, uh, that's CHW Halifax paving, PNS paving. And so we do need you to, uh, we need action on this item in order for us to encumber, correct?
Um, yes, ma'am, and I would also mention that you do have an, a subitem to this, uh, the Putnam County Caring Coalition, Ms. Marvin is prepared to present today.
You said some items have been changed over here, earlier I saw. Um, South Fifteenth and Oak being addressed. You know, I saw it.
I believe that is included in road maintenance, that's where it is.
So.
PHW.
The numbers are different.
Right, because we, we've been living and we've been spending money, so that's.
So what is the? Yeah, so that did, that was, so tell me what's on Fifteenth and, um, Oak right now, what, what we have earmarked for that area?
And, and Opera, uh, I met with the grants people today and it's, uh. We have a remaining balance that was included in Opera funding of fifty one thousand. That we had to spend, so that's at CHW, and that's the portion that's included in that one sixty five thousand number. So that was the part that was oak.
No, it was larger than that, earlier.
Maybe they've already paid some of it, but that's where they are now, um, is any project manager here? Hello?
I don't see anybody.
Carlos?
Becky might be over there.
Yeah, I think he was here, um, and we have him, maybe he can help. But, uh, but this is just strictly the Opera Funds portion.
I know, but so that, because we, I know we're about to spend that money and start, um, engaging in these, I wanted to make certain that. The areas that you and I. We all looked at, also gonna be included. In this, also with other sources of funding.
So discussing, referring to that amount that's in the budget this year. Uh, the portion that's in Opera is one hundred fourteen thousand four seventy five, and that is included in that one sixty five. The rest of those funds are not Opera Funds, the rest of them are in streets. You know, you have one point, I, I was working with that today, but they are in other funds and it is still in the budget.
Right, so the Oak and those other streets are just included with the hundred fourteen thousand, that's.
Okay, so.
That was fifty one remaining over Oak.
Yes, fifty one thousand was for Oak.
But the total.
Go ahead.
It's three numbers, that's what I'm saying, it's one sixty five. Here, hundred sixty five thousand, then you mentioned fifty one thousand and then a hundred fourteen thousand, so.
So tell me which one, what do you want me to explain, do you want me to explain where's that two point four million? You want me to explain that, no?
No, it is, this is an Opera Fund Zone, that's.
Only, right.
So you mentioned a hundred and fourteen thousand out of Opera Funds that go through the, uh, to Halifax paving, right?
That's what we are encumbering, yes.
Okay, so. And the fifty one is just.
That Oak, uh, portion. So of this one sixty five thousand, fifty one thousand belongs, just fifty thousand belongs to the Oak. We have an actual purchase order for the Oak Street.
So it's fifty thousand.
Yeah, just say fifty thousand.
Thank you.
And then that difference, that there is a one fourteen that's referring to, that's included in that two point four million. In this line, okay, because the breakout is in three funds, of the two point four.
Or the rest of that stuff?
Mm-hmm, so one point four is in Better Place, and one mill is over there in Streets. And anyway, when you add it all up, it'll come to the two point four.
For our city streets.
For city streets and the north section, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we have to take some action on this?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. City Clerk, we need action, right?
Um, I would recommend you not hear action until you've heard the presentation of the person on the agenda to present.
Please come up. Thank you. Give your name.
This is Cindy Marvin with the Putnam County Caring Coalition.
I'm gonna ask her to give her name for the record. No, come on, come on up.
She's a different item on the agenda.
Okay. Come, come on up here, please, Ms. Marvin.
Georgia Mitchell, who is our director, is going to present our proposal. And you'll be happy, because she's much more organized than me.
Okay. Please give your name and city of residence and your organization.
Hi, uh, Georgia Mitchell, city of Palakta, uh, with PC three, Putnam County Caring Coalition. Um, we're petitioning for twenty five thousand dollars in order to provide beds for unhoused individuals within the city. Um, our average cost for bed runs about thirty dollars, much less than the cost of jailing. And provides our folks with a warm, safe place to sleep. With an overnight attendant in order to ensure their safety. And, uh, the hours run from seven AM to seven, seven PM to seven AM, uh, open twenty four seven. Any questions?
Where is this located?
Uh, this is at one twenty six South Second Street in Palakta.
Yes, Minister Hall, is this, and this is considered a temporary situation, correct? Just clarification for those people, yes.
That's a great question, yes. That's a great question, yes, our goal is to find a more permanent location where we can expand services and, uh, work toward helping unhoused individuals find a way to be of value to the community, uh, find jobs, um, reeducate themselves, uh.
Get the other services they need, the wraparound services.
Exactly, um, of which we will provide, uh, uh, connections to those resources as they exist here while we're still operating as a temporary overnight safe space, um, but would love to be able to expand services as time goes on.
Because, uh, as much as, and I do want to support this and support your effort, I do know also the, that downtown businesses and merchants do have a lot of reservations. They also have compassion and want to see something happen for these folks, but they are concerned because they are hanging out downtown after seven AM.
And, and I share that concern, I'm, uh, I live in the North District and I'm a business owner as well. Um, the goal is to be able to provide these folks a path to independence, um, and, and connect them al- also to, to resources that are closer geographically, um, where we're at right now, it's not ideal.
Okay, thank you, any question, go ahead.
I do have a question, you said it's twenty-four hours, but you said the operation hours that people will be able to be there is from seven P to seven A, what is done in those additional twelve hours?
Uh, I apologize if I misspoke, our goal is to provide twenty-four hour service. Uh, currently, we're only providing service from seven PM to seven AM.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bar.
Do you, do you know when you'll have the other twelve hours covered, are you, like, you're going to phase it in, but do you know?
What's the plan for that?
Yeah.
Um, our goal is to provide, uh, another location, and once we get a new location, we'll be able to phase in additional services. Um, but right now at Westminster, we most likely will stay seven PM to seven AM. So once we get a new location, that will provide us with the room that we need in order to expand services.
You guys are doing good work, I just want to ask this question, so how are y'all being housed there, is there a lease agreement with the church, is there?
It's through the, the gracious, um, do- uh, donation and generosity of the church. Um, it is, uh, handshake agreement, um, but they're committed to allowing us to stay until we can, uh, uh, find something permanent.
So, so, you guys, so you don't pay them any?
No, not at this, at this time, we pay, um, uh, no rent, uh, utilities, or have administrative or management costs, these are just operational costs.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So are we allowed to allocate funds before advertising, how much are we allowed to allocate before we have to go out and advertise? If it's twenty-five?
Twenty nine thousand?
I don't know, I'm asking.
I'll have to research that point.
So we'll need to know that right before we allocate funds?
Yeah.
Because we have to advertise if we go over a certain number.
And, and you mean advertising if, in order to actually build the money to them? Yes, I would say that we would have to do that at twenty-five thousand, what, what we have to do tonight, though, we have to have a foundation for issuing the encumbrance, and we're just giving you proposed names at this point, so naturally.
Before December thirty-first?
Yeah, we have to.
We have to make commitments and encumbrance.
And at that time, anything over twenty-five has to be advertised, am I right?
Yes. Of course.
Do we have time for that?
Well, we're just, this is just encumbering, this is not actually awarding. Um, the only thing, um, these are just names that we are seeing, we current, we already have the relationship awarded to St. John's Housing. And we already have relationship rewarded or awarded with S G S. Um, you know, sensible water. Anything else before it's actually awarded, we would have to go through our entire R F P process. So this is simply for encumbrancing only.
And it has to be done by December thirty-first?
It does.
Do you have time for that?
I have to, yes, ma'am.
For advertising?
For advertising.
Not, not, not to award, this is just proposed, these names can change.
And that was going to be my question.
Yeah, the names can change.
Interested in how some of these names came about.
That's just us putting names here to get feedback from you to let you understand that we must encumber by December thirty-one.
Well, in order for us to move forward, I mean, because Sunny made the recommendation that we hear, uh, the proposal, as if if you were, if.
To take action.
And that was actually independent of us preparing this, when we prepared this, that was before this, um, the request for to be heard.
Action do we need to take?
The action that we need to take is to give management the authority to encumber one million five hundred seventeen thousand in the various categories that we have established here.
I'm in agreement with the categories.
Yes, and then as it relates to the actual, uh, awardee, uh, that would have to go through the R F P process in order to be actually awarded. These are just, uh, suggestions only. Except for where it's already been awarded, such as the St. John's Housing that's been awarded. The S N, S G S contracted awarded, but any place where it's not awarded, then these are just suggestions.
So, so, there, there are two areas on here that we know service our community, Bread of Life and the Heart of Putnam, and they kind of like have the lowest amount. And, uh, we know that it takes a lot of money to do what they do. Could, and I no discredit to mental health counseling, but we're giving a company, SMA, and that's a for-profit company, right?
Remember, this is just a suggestion, we're not giving them anything.
Yeah, well, okay, so, could we give more to, I would like to see more going to the works of what Bread of Life do, doing, and the Heart of Putnam, uh, maybe to, to ten or fifteen thousand each.
Yes, sir.
Out of that, out of that pool of money.
Okay, so out of that fifty thousand for housing?
Out of the hundred thousand
Oh.
that you have allocated for.
SMA.
Yeah, SMA.
Okay, and SMA may not be the actual person.
That line item.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Right, yes, sir.
Yeah.
And how much more would we like to put to Bread of Life?
Maybe fifteen apiece.
Okay, fifteen.
Not much more, up to fifteen thousand.
We're encumbering the whole number.
Mm-hmm.
So we can move forward and then move things around, correct?
About any one of these lines.
Okay.
That's all, but I thought we were.
No, okay.
Except for those that are already under contract.
But I still would like to see this, so.
Yes.
Mayor, if we may, uh, if you're.
Go ahead, please.
So that we can move forward, uh, uh, make a motion that we give or allow staff to move forward with the encumbered with the line items that are presented, bringing back the opportunity to have discussion to move funding and vendors around as we move forward.
Thank you, that's precisely.
My second motion.
Your motion is second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Thank you. Um, report supervisor elected elections, official election results. This is Mr. Overture here.
Madam Mayor, I'll be reading the report today, if you'll allow me just a second.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission, City Manager, for the opportunity to read the report into the record. For the city of Palaca, Commissioner Group One, the whole number of votes as reported by the Putnam County Canvassing Board was three thousand four hundred and nineteen, of which Annie Henderson Davis received two thousand two hundred and forty-four votes. Allegra Kitchens received one thousand one hundred and seventy-five votes. For City of Palaca, Commissioner Group Three, the whole number of votes cast was three thousand four hundred and ninety-four, of which Willie Jones received one thousand nine hundred and sixty-one votes. Elizabeth Denrenzberg received one thousand five hundred and thirty-three votes. Um, in accord with the city's charter, we will plan the inauguration ceremony of the commissioners to be held January sixth, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty PM at City Hall. Thank you for the opportunity to present the report.
Thank you. Um, D request Episcopal Children's Services request for three thousand dollars for grant match for school readiness program. Please give us your name, thank you for the record.
My name is Rebecca Spangler, I am, um, I'm the sweet, the, uh, assistant of the D of Programs, um, my position is, uh, for the given to you, so senior director of programs, all the contact information. I do have a PowerPoint, um, that I want to share some slides with you as well. You're getting this second time, and, well, children's services are home on this, this is, and Shaksin, we have, we are a non-operated team that have been serving underserved children in Northeast Central Florida, that was either fifteen or thirteen. Um, we provide crucial support for guidance, given seeking high quality childcare, educational opportunities through our school readiness, which is subsidized childcare, and voluntary for paying up in programs. The Department of Education's Division of Early Learning is where our programs come through. They have thirty-eight early learning partnerships that they are contracted with. Uh, ours happens to be the early learning partnership of Florida, who oversees, uh, six counties, like Nassau, Baker Bradford, at them in St. John's. And we are the contractor for the early learning partnership of Florida, so that's how Episcopal is involved. And I have a couple of programs, we have three programs that we, you see, assistive readiness program, which is if I introduce assistance program for families who are, um, actively working or going to school and needing assistance within the childcare. We have the voluntary for getting ready program, four-year-olds for the state of Florida, that is a free program. And we have a childcare resource and where to help program, which is a program that is free to anybody regardless of income, household size. Uh, and that is where we help families, uh, find childcare needs or any resources within the community, um, that their households may need, such as food factories, um, assistance for paying for rent, housing, this, which. Today, though, my reason for being here is because we are requesting for our school readiness program. Um, your support with your contribution of three thousand dollars or any amount that you'd be able to uh, come contribute to us for our twenty-four, twenty-five budget to help us meet our matching. So, perfect slide, and in your packets, you're going to have a larger and, uh, for this on this slide. And I wanted to kind of point this out because one of the first things that we talk about is, I mean, you look at household expenses overall, um, more often than not, childcare is the highest household expense. And it is a needed expense for families to be able to work, go to school, or, um, support their families. And when you look at the charts, um, this is for the state of Florida, but it's not just in Florida, it's everywhere. The cost for an infant or a toddler to go to childcare in either a center or a family childcare home for one year is actually more expensive than it is for a, for a year tuition at a state college. So when you put things in a perspective that way, and trying to find care to meet the needs for your child, to be able to work and support your family, this is what it means, that's why we need your help, and why the city of Palaca's families need your help. And unfortunately, this school readiness program is not really a good program for, uh, donors who just like to, um, do like a one-time gift or a plan for gifts, because this is a program that is ongoing and is a needed program annually, it's not a one-time gift project that you see in members all right, may, this is a continuous need for families. Regardless of this, uh, we always and will continue to serve Putnam County and continue to look for, um, any type of funding. So how your funding will help up? Um, basically, the main source of our funding is from the federal government. They do require a six percent match, again, that's why I'm here tonight. And your funding will solely, solely be used directly for childcare services. And again, this is directly for those families that are working or going to school and need assistance in paying for childcare, so it's not a free program, it's assisting them with the payments for childcare. Um, and the Department of Education and on top of that, any donate, any amounts that you donate, they will then match it for one-to-one basis. So the three thousand that we're asking, the state would match it and give us another three thousand dollars. So again, um, just like I said, it's for the families who are, um, working, going to school, they have to make a use.
Ma- Mayor.
Yes. Are you, are you done, ma'am?
It's okay.
Okay, thanks.
For us to move forward, so I think this is a worthy cause, I know the cost of childcare, because I have a fifteen-month-old, uh, fifteen-month-old.
Boy, yo.
Fifteen months. I've been taught to give that extra detail, but I do believe that this is a worthy cause, and I'm willing, if I can, from my funding to be able to give a certain amount, and I'll get with staff, um, to determine the amount that I'm able to give, but I do believe that this is something, it's a worthy cause, if we can't give it from the city's perspective, I'm willing to give from my funding to make sure that this happen.
Thank you, and I know that she has a copy of the PowerPoint, so if you want to see the rest of the slides, they're there, because we also support all of our uh, childcare programs within the city, which are the small businesses, so they also benefit from our programs.
Okay, um, thank you, Commissioner Campbell, anybody else?
The same, whatever avenues we need to take, uh, in order to match, to get the three thousand, I'm in support of it. So if we can't get it from the commission as a whole, I'm willing to.
Not, if we can't use the special events fund, let's find a way to do it, that's what I'm suggesting.
Likewise, I share the same sentiment.
It's not a lot of money in them, I think we, it's so important.
Needed.
Yes.
So we're, we're willing to do it, just help us find the best source of funding, and we, we agree, so do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, allocate, uh, this requested three thousand dollars for grant matching, um, for a school readiness program through Episcopal Children's Services.
Second. We have a motion, second all in favor?
Uh, question.
Oh, go ahead, question, sorry.
So, Opera Funds also have education piece, uh, ladies and gentlemen, that we could actually get those funds from there as education, if you use their allocation, okay, alright, how about, can we restate your motion?
No, because they're going.
Okay, sorry, but that's the avenue.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bar.
Uh, well, I guess it's, it's not the right time to do this right now, because we're going to pass the budget season, but we're just looking at, um, maybe adding that to uh, our budget line item for that particular thing, because it's going to be an ongoing deal. And it's going to assist, uh, people who, uh, live in, live in our city.
So we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Seating forth, there, we missed, um, to accept the official.
Set and see.
No.
The result.
Election results.
I read the report, but there wasn't a motion.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept?
Motion that we accept.
Second.
Motion is second all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, next, request Blue Crowe Productions, request for sponsorship for New Year's Celebration, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, Miss Hughes. Do you want to read the resolution?
Madam Mayor, if the commission does find that commission's special event plans are appropriate, um, we have prepared a resolution for your review. Um, if you'd like to hear the presentation and then I read the caption, we can do it that way.
Be fine, thank you, go ahead, Miss Hughes.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff, I'm Erin Hughes with Blue Crowe Productions, and I'm excited to come before you today to talk about our New Year's Celebration event that we're doing, uh, which includes a plethora, uh, excuse me, a plethora of exciting things to share. Uh, we'll be offering a community event with a vendor market, food trucks, and, um, a dazzling dream show with some custom things that are local landmarks and be very familiar to our community. Uh, we also have a headliner of the Hit Factory Band, uh, which will definitely get you moving on the feet and, uh, dancing on a dance floor with us. So, um, I actually come before you today to extend the opportunity of a sponsorship and request that, um, the commission, um, participate and, and invest alongside of us in this spectacular event, and this is the first time that we are holding a drum show in this community, I've already heard questions about our doing fireworks and things like that. So, um, I'm excited to, to tell the community that we are having something for New Year's this year, and that is a first-time, um, inaugural thing that I hope that we can continue. So, again, I'd like to extend that opportunity for you to partner and sponsor with us, um, and see if that is the will of the commission tonight.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any thoughts? Any thoughts?
That's for some, that's for later. Not for that.
I'll get with staff with regards to this is a community event, so.
As it relates to, do I make the suggestion that we should fund it and in what amount?
What did they ask it?
Yes.
What was the ask?
What is the amount that you're asking for?
So, so we, I stuck down with your interim city manager and initially proposed five thousand. It was suggested twenty-five hundred was the, the amount suggested and discussed in the end. So it's the will of the commission.
So the options are one thousand, twenty-five hundred, five thousand, ten thousand, and twenty thousand. If the commission desired to assist with this, anywhere between the one thousand and twenty-five hundred. If we were to look for funding, I was looking for funding and I believe that I can find some funding if you desire it.
I was thinking special event funds. If, if that was up to each individual commissioner, obviously, to make that decision whether they want to use their funds for that purpose or not. I'm willing to discuss using some of my funds. I want to see what my balance is. I can have. Okay.
But we do have a special event fund, right?
We do.
And since the city isn't putting on a, or are we? Oh.
A New Year's event? No, sorry. We are the event and the, and the permit has been approved.
Yeah, so city is not putting on an event, so take it out of special events fund.
And we do have under community affairs, a line item for special events.
So you, you, you recommend between a thousand and twenty-five hundred?
I, I was saying not to exceed twenty-five hundred.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Again.
Commissioner Born, what do you suggest?
Your lights are.
No, my light is on for something else.
Oh.
Okay. Okay.
That's why I'm open here.
Okay, thank you. It's confusing. Anybody else?
I'm done.
Okay. Um, no.
I mean, we're belaboring the point. We say it between submission. And if we're going to do it from the city's perspective or we're going to do it from the individual's perspective, I'm willing to give to the event from my personal, if we are not as a collective looking to move forth with it so that we can move forth and it comes from my.
And who can resist a dazzling drone show? So yes, I, I said the same thing basically. So whatever seems to be the best option. Okay, going forward. Do we want to do city sponsorship or individual from our special events? That's the question. And you want you want, I didn't mean for you to make that decision.
I just made a point that we have in a special event fund.
Right.
And it's a special event. So we should go ahead and allocate the money between, we already put the parameters.
I'll make sure. That's what I said. So which one, go ahead. Did we ask the CRA board about this?
No.
No.
Because that.
Yes.
Sorry. I don't think she did.
But for entertainment, the CRA statute, remember we had the twenty, the review of the twenty AG two thousand and nineteen. Ms. West, you can answer better than I, two thousand and nineteen ruling that basically it wasn't to be used.
For entertainment.
For entertainment. That wasn't, that was actually here when Ms. Val was here. She gave us that information. So CRA funds may not be an option.
I said, let's give, make a motion to give him twenty-five thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars. Out of the special event fund for this event, it's an inaugural.
The motion is second, all in favor. Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Thank you, Miss Hughes.
Madam Mary, do you want to vote down the resolution if I read the caption?
Yes, quickly, please. Thank you.
Resolution. Sorry. Two thousand and twenty-four R two sixty-one, a resolution of the city plaque authorizing the spinny sheriff commission special event funds for the Blue Crowe Productions New Year's Celebration on December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, and preventing first governor's errors.
Thank you. Um, next.
Are you entertaining a motion to vote that now?
We have a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion to deny.
Second. We have a motion denying. Okay, second on favor. Aye. Any opposition? Thank you.
Not I like that, but I was going to ask a question. Sunny, within, you said commissioners' funds. How did that come as a request for commissioners' funds and not just a funding from the state, I mean, from the city?
My supervisor told me to do it.
What, where is this? I don't see it.
Well, we just.
Okay, now, hold up.
You had recommended commissioner's special event funds for the item and I prepared the resolution in accordance with your, with your request.
Okay, so therefore, now that we've had the meeting.
No, I was just asking. It, it doesn't have to.
We don't have to go too deep.
Okay.
We don't have to do the.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion direction, lease agreement at Jenkins Community Center. Mr. Cutright, is that what your question is? Let him come up and explain it first and then get to you.
All right, Eddie Cutright, nineteen hundred Napoleon Street. Back in September, about really back several commission meetings, y'all gave us Mr. Bale and myself opportunity to reach out to organizations to try to bring people come to utilize the classrooms and office rooms that we had at Jenkins. Back in September, Ms. Lynx from Epicure Children's Children's Services reached out to me expressing interest to give.
Epicure Children's Services?
Epicure Children's Services, yes. Reached out to me to actually utilize the, yeah, Episcopal, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, a long day Wednesday. I'm usually on, one on Thursday, so Wednesday is a down night. They reached out to me to try to rent the facilities. Rent the, the office space on the guidance counselor side of the building, right across from the multipurpose room. Through several dialogue conversations with Ms. Lynx and again, Mr. Bale and also, also the interim city manager, Ms. Carter and Ms. West. We, we negotiated some things and came up with conversations about the facility. They asked him for the three offices and a joint shared space of the conference room. Through that point, we came up with some, the actual office space for all three offices, thirty, we rated three hundred and sixty-seven seven square footage. We ran it up to seventy-five, three seventy-five. It came out to be about fourteen hundred and some. The dollar amount came up to three hundred dollars per office, twelve hundred dollars a month. There, least they was in his last building as they leaving, was they was paying the same amount. So we tried to make sure we keep it the same amount or less. And conversations, we was looking at trying to get them in. We have had a couple of snags with the construction right now from dealing with MIE. They're not slated for that side of the building to be finished to late January, mid, mid February at best. And I have conveyed that to Ms. Lynx to come up with the square footage. We reached out to a couple places, Maple Palace and their square footage was nine dollars square footage. The office of Westgate Palace, we looked online there and they have eight dollars and fifty cent square footage, so we and then we reached out somewhere in Jacksonville and that was ten fifty. So we came to a happy medium, nine sixty to give us the three hundred dollars and that's how we came up with that.
Thank you, well.
I mean, again, the numbers we looked at with different places, that was the number we came up with. I mean, I'm willing to change. I'm willing to work out the numbers y'all want us to put in place, but these are the numbers that we seen. These are the numbers we came up with.
And so you said, I'm sorry about that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jones. You already were.
The square foot is came from where?
Different relatives, relative officer.
Different relative officers?
Yeah, we just, I did a Google search and it came up with a good number that we could find. Again, I'm not saying this is a sketch in stone, but we were trying to get a starting point and that's what we came up with.
You stayed at the starting point, it looked like. So there is a national average, at least a national average, and then you could stay in Florida for those. And I didn't come up with the same, just as we were, you know, as I was looking through this and, and trying to figure out where you get the number from. And it's very important that we get those numbers right. But each lease agreement, because we do supposed to be reviewing all, am I right?
Yes.
Throughout the city. And I think we mentioned this one time before about we, we do want to be a good community partner. And, and, and service, let people use our facilities for service of the underserved. But what, what tends to happen, how do we pick and choose who's going to actually be in our spaces? And be able to either afford them or can't. We don't want a price amount, but I think it's market rents are going to be necessary because they're going to be able to get funding from other places to pay those market rents. And if they're paying rent, are they also paying any type of utilities? What's included in there? I mean, and, 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 and I know you bring this up here for us to prove it, but it's the first time hearing of it. So what we gets? I, I didn't, I didn't know about the, we sent Mr. Bill out and asked for this neighbors or partners for the, for the Jenkins Center. I didn't know about that. I didn't know we were at that point. I thought we were told to get the numbers, what are the costs to lease all our buildings? That's, that report supposedly came back to us. And I think Campbell said in the last meeting that we did get it. He mentioned it, but I haven't received it.
We got that information and we gave information.
I haven't received it.
Yeah, we, we did.
Do you have it? You said, I mean, you have it in your pack. Could you just?
No, I don't have that. I don't have that in my package because I've been giving all my conversations and dialogues went through the city managers and acting city managers. So I've ingrained that package with me. This conversation started back in September. And so I was assuming or hoping that that's information was fed to y'all as we had these conversations.
Okay, so my point, and I'll let Campbell, Commissioner Campbell speak. So my point is the amount for fair market lease is at least, at least fifteen dollars square foot. Can I show you? You.
Well, but this for Platteville and the region itself?
What he said wasn't for Platteville, so. Then I mean, and it means that some of the places you told me you reached out, that you just said, that you.
Maple Palace, Platteville, Florida.
What's the name of the place?
Maple's Palace. And Westgate Palace. Yeah, these are just, we, these are relatives that, that Contrale and Morgan. And these are places that Google just to get us, get us a starting point to try to find a fair market value to bring them in and keep them at the price they was paying at their previous place that they were leaving from. Again, the, the square footage price can be changed. It's definitely up to y'all, but this was ran up the chain and hopefully that it will dial out to y'all.
Well, so let's consider also, just putting it out here to be fair, because I'm putting it to be fair, they're not, if they're, are they paying also water and sewer?
Not his original contract that we came up with. But we can add that or subtract that or put that in there. Right now, again, these was, they started a conversation to give you people that was calling me trying to utilize the facility.
To pay utilities that would have to be calculated out of our city. That would be really challenging. Let's just put it that way.
It should be, because they're going to use it, it should be included into.
I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. I also, I guess my question is, what is the purpose of Jenkins in leasing these spaces? Is it to make money or is it to make some money and provide a service? And I guess we have to decide that.
So and that's what I. Tonight, we're not going to decide. So in order for us to properly have the conversations and bring forth everything that the commission has requested, which are the, the spaces that are available, the square foot of the places that are available in that facility. The recommendation that you brought to us tonight with regards to square footage, giving the commission the opportunity to submit their request for square footage. So I think that this should be a matter that is properly placed on the agenda or workshop so that we can take in consideration. I know at one point, this, we got to realize that Jenkins is not anything new. So this has gone through a lot of different phases, not only with the facility, but with different leadership leading way beyond Mr. Bale. So again, there are a lot of things that have been communicated to to our department head at that location that has changed. So in all fair, all honesty and transparency, let's give him the opportunity to really regroup, refocus and really get this building and facility, the attention, the attention that it needs at the point of where we are now. I don't think that it's going to be anything that's hindering, even in the event that the area that they are looking to have done, won't be done. Anytime soon as of now, and there's a potential that it would not be done even at that given timeframe based on what we've seen traditionally happening over at that facility. So again, let's give him the opportunity to refocus, regroup, and let's really move forth with a true vision of what we want for that location and not speculations here, speculations there. Let's really workshop this. Let's really get this down to pack. So as we go forth, because that's not the only tenant that has come and wanted to be housed at that facility. There are several individuals, I am personal businesses that want it to be housed at that facility. So let's really get this right. So when we do advertise, when we do put it out, it's not, there's no room for confusion. There's no room for list, trust and transparency. I think that's what we need to give Mr. Cutright the opportunity to, so he's clear and not going off speculations of what has happened with past administration.
And with that said, you're suggesting a workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I was just trying to comment on that as well, but the, the thing with that is even at, so we, we don't want to look at locking people into any market rate rent because a lot of times the services that the city cannot provide like maybe example, but the social security office or some other agency or entity. It would be pertinent that the city could provide that even if it's free because those services are not here and, and there are so many people who need that service. And so we need to look at what actually need to go in, into that facility. And I've mentioned it several times about the social security office and I don't know if anybody come.
Yeah, we did.
When there's other places, but again, we're supposed to have a suite of some middles and we just haven't circled back around to that yet. So again, the workshop would, would help clear up some of this. So and while we're on allocating funds, I'm dumb, I'm dumb. While I'm on allocating funds, there was a request from Calvary from the ARPA funds, from the presentation that was submitted to the commission. I think it was back in November eleventh, somewhere around in that timeframe. But they were asking for thirty-five thousand from ARPA and also thirty-five from ARPA for mental health. And fifteen, you know, fifteen for mental health and thirty-five from public health. That's what they were asking at the time. So the presentation was sent and we just need to make, I guess, get some direction from the commission.
I did, I did meet with them a couple of times actually.
Okay.
There was some more information that we were requesting.
Okay.
So we'll, we don't mind meeting with them again, things involving status of nonprofit and that kind of stuff.
Okay, so you're waiting on.
I'm waiting on them to come back and hopefully give us more information.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that while we're allocating, we need to we had some previous requests already.
Yes. Any further discussion? And to Commissioner comments? Any, Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, I want to apologize to Commissioner Pelisir. He, I was ill-informed. I know he had something on the agenda and so he was here tonight that was on the original agenda.
Yes.
And I was ill-advised. I thought this was going to be a full run-through of what was on that previous agenda. So I wanted to publicly apologize to you because you did clear your schedule and I did say that I would bring it before the commission. But I was, I did not know until after we had our conversation on yesterday. So again, I wanted to apologize publicly because you did show up thinking, yes.
I know people have lived and life goes on and situations and all that. But I would think it would be going forward in the future, very handy that the, someone in your command staff here contact me. So I wouldn't be here tonight. Because I have no other items on that agenda and this is delaying my project five weeks back. It caused me several files. And I would like to have been contacted and notified. So I wouldn't be here tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, and we all apologize for that, thank you. Um, any other comments, Commissioner? Yeah, Commissioner Jones?
No, okay.
Commissioner Bourne?
I just wanna, uh, thank the community and the commission for putting up with my absence the last time I was, uh, at the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust Board meeting, and so I was there, uh, and we have quarterly meetings, uh, and it's, it is to do with city business, so uh, something that we certainly need to make sure that we are working, looking out for workers' comp's, uh, claims among other things, and so that's where I was on last meeting. This meeting, uh, was a special call meeting, which conflicted with an exam I had to take today. I had to be in there for three hours, so, um, so I finished my exam in Jacksonville and was successful at that, and so I'm certified in another, uh, area, cybersecurity certified, system management, so just wanna just thank you guys for putting up with me for my, my absence, and this was all not planned. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner McCaskill.
Um, I was expecting an item on the agenda tonight, and it was concerning a major decision that was made, and I just need some clarification, and it was concerning the interim city manager position and the term dead contract. Explain the process of how all that happened and what entail, can we talk about that? Is, is it proper to do it tonight, but I just need some.
With, with what happened Thursday evening, and not having quorum Thursday evening for a variety of reasons that were all legitimate on everybody's part, we had to reschedule the special call meeting, and we tried to trim it down a bit, so that, that, so.
So we decided that very important.
We took several things, it wasn't just that, and it was, it was just a discussion to take several things off that were not urgent or emergency, and the things that make Mr. Pelisir's issue, um, has to require another legal notice, go ahead.
But it also goes back to his.
That's what I was just saying, but Mr. Pelisir, once we rescheduled the meeting, Ms. West, can you speak to that about noticing?
It, I don't even think it's about noticing, I think when we said we were gonna have a meeting, we were prepared to tend to the business of everything that was on there. That last meeting, we had a full house of individuals that were here with regards to wanting to conduct business. We understand that life happened, we have, we're moving forth, but here yet again, major decisions that have to be made are or have been pushed off. Again, that's why I gave my public apology to Mr. Pelisir, because I told him yesterday that it was going to be a full meeting, as if it was the one that we missed, so again, we were not informed until after I got the email that it was amended. But again, it goes back to that point, as we move forth, the determination of what's on the agenda, if we were having a special call meeting, the special call meeting should have covered everything that was on that previous meeting that we did not cover, because again, it hindered the business, and again, now that we are all here, we are all in the chambers, we still have business that is unaccounted for, and is going to be pushed off into our January meeting. So again, the determination of who made that was not from the entire commission.
Okay, and I guess now I should say something to address it. Uh, we did meet being transparent, we did meet and tried to go through, we being the mayor and myself, uh, going through the agenda, saying, is there any way that we, do we need to, uh, change anything or keep it the same? As we went through that process, there were a number of items that were taken off.
So it's safe to say you and the mayor decided what was gonna be on the agenda tonight?
It's safe to say that, I don't go to any pre-agenda meetings, but here we were after Thursday, didn't know if we could even get this meeting called. Um, we're trying to work on get it called as soon as possible and before the end of the year, and with that mind thought of streamlining it would make it more, um, uh, uh, people feeling they wanted to get out, it's a holiday season, did not wanna keep you late, and thought maybe if we helped do that, and took some items that could wait off, which is what we did.
So it's safe to say you and the mayor, you and the interim city manager decided what was gonna be on the agenda.
City manager, you know, I work.
And I will take responsibility as the chair of this board, yes, I will take responsibility.
So I wanna ask about dead contract, can we, can y'all explain that to me? I just wanna.
I'm sorry.
Understand what a dead contract means.
Legal, well, address that.
Sure. Um, in the context of this particular negotiation, what you have is a offer that was submitted by HR to Mr. Hill, based upon a salary range of figures that the commissioners conveyed to the HR director. And that offer was extended to Mr. Hill, he counter-offered with a different number, and please recall that you had a liaison here on the board, uh, Commissioner Jones, and so if you do have questions about this process, he has, uh, personal knowledge as well. That counteroffer, uh, was basically a rejection of the offer that was extended. And at that point, you could choose to negotiate further, um, or it is a rejection of the offer that was made, and you no longer have a contract. Just as in the context of a real estate transaction, when you submit an offer on a house, and it is countered, if you don't accept that counter, you no longer have a contract.
I have to do things in chunks, so you say it, we decided whether or not we wanted to negotiate. Who decided that? Was it brought back before us to negotiate or made that decision? Who made that decision?
I would direct your question to your liaison for this particular matter.
Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Jones. So, if you recall that meeting, the meeting said, I mean, uh, your request, at your request, Commissioner McCaskill, that we present a number that we all agreed to, to the candidate, candidate Hill. So, and that's what Mrs., uh, Jones did in the email. I was there when she authored the email, sent it out, um. Uh, so at that point, your directions here says, I was named the liaison, and just for the record, didn't really understand what that position is about, because I cannot come back with any information to give to the council. So, that position wouldn't actually work in this kind of situation, because talking to you guys offline or sharing any information would be a breach of sunshine. So this commissioner felt compelled, after, after, well, I didn't feel comfortable. So after, uh, the offer was given, the counter was also given, and this commissioner, as I stated, uh, I put in the email form, there was an offer, there was not a counteroffer from this side, it was off, counteroffer from attorney Hill, her, Mrs. Jones, uh, given to her. My instruction from this dice was to give the offer from the commission to Nathaniel, that's, that's, that's all authorization I had. So, at that point, communication was given back to, to me in leg, in, uh, legal, through Ms. Jones, and at that point, that term came up through legal, it was, well, it's dead, it's a dead contract. So, that's where it ended. So my communication to Ms. Jones, to legal, and Ms. Cardy, was my services in this particular process is over, because there's no negotiating. I wasn't authorized, I wasn't authorized, just like you just said.
Yes.
I wasn't authorized to negotiate a contract. We presented, from this, this side, we presented that number. That number was basically, it was denied, and at that point, that was over, on my part, my job is done.
But, I don't wanna ask a question pertaining to that. How was that number offered? Was it offered in the contract? In, in the email, the way we received it? How was it offered to, how was it presented?
Ms. Jones?
Yeah, she's the professional.
Uh, in keeping, again, I wanna make sure, because we're in Commissioner comments, and you do have that this is appropriate for us to have this conversation at this time.
As far as, versus an emergency item added, or?
Correct, because.
Maybe, can I motion to add?
Because again, I want us to be mindful of, we have Mr. Pelisir here, that we didn't take this matter on as a, I, because I just want us to be mindful as we move forward and have that in consideration as well.
Motion to add, this is an emergency item to speak on, please, discussed tonight. Regarding.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion died due to lack of second. Thank you, from a man, Mr. Hill. Um, can you, uh, just for my sake, Ms., no, Ms. West for clarification, in regards to Mr. Pelisir, with the meeting not happening Thursday, how much notice had to be provided?
There's no difference than with Mr. Hill, so I don't even think that's, that's not fair to him. And the reason I did what I did was because we did not extend that courtesy.
I agree with you.
No, we're gonna be fair, and we're gonna be transparent. We, it's nothing against, uh, what the conversation that was at hand. If we're gonna be fair, we're gonna be fair, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna circle, and we're not going to give opportunity for something that we didn't address at the time, because again, he's here, just like Mr. Hill is here, and I will publicly apologize to Mr. Hill as well, because I thought that this was going to be a full-fledged meeting, covering everything. So don't think that the decision that was made tonight means that it's over. I want to be fair and consistent in our dealings and moving forward.
You can have any additional comments? Commissioner comments, okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We'll.